Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now seven thirty according to my watch, and I'd like to call this August twenty-fourth meeting of the City Council to order. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Having said the pledge, will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Present.
Bud Matts is absent, O'Brien's absent, Veneziano's absent. Bassisi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sonoika.
Here.
With four present and three absent, there still is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel as well as other media platforms. The first order of business tonight is to approve the minutes from previous meetings. There are three sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first set is from July twentieth, twenty-twenty-one committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Thank you, Alderman Bassisi, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Next set of minutes are for August fourth, twenty-twenty-one special city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Bassisi, for the second. With this set of minutes, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Those minutes are approved. Moving on to the third and final set of minutes, this is for August tenth, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika again. Thank you, Alderman Bassisi, for the second. This is going to be easy to call motions here with a short cast. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall this set of minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and those minutes are approved. We do not have any reason to deviate this evening, and there isn't much for the mayor to report tonight, other than the fact that we are all wearing face masks. As you can tell, the mask mandate is back in effect, specifically here in Cook County, for us regardless of vaccination status, so we will continue to wear our masks indoors until otherwise noted. Are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman Sonoika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, August sixteenth, I attended the Fairfax Village Annual Homeowners Association meeting, and at that meeting, there was a request from residents there to talk about exploring the possibility of any sound barriers along Route fifty-three and the west frontage area. And we had essentially discussed what had been done on the Capitol Projects Committee and what would be next as far as the process of exploring that issue. And the next issue that we had agreed upon was having a sound study by the city of Rolling Meadows in order to be able to determine if I-DOT needs to revisit this issue or explore this issue, or if the city would need to consider that project within the Capitol Projects Committee. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Any other ward reports this evening? Okay. Seeing no further ward reports, now is the time when we will open the floor to the public for twenty minutes, and I do understand that we do have one signature on the sign-in sheet. However, prior to calling on this signature, I'm going to make sure that we're all aware of the rules. So in order to attain the objective of allowing public to speak, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who wishes to seek and address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the city councils shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted twenty minutes. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and of course profanity will not be used, tolerated in any form or manner. With that, the first name, the only name on the sign-in sheet is Linda Cohen. Linda, welcome this evening.
Thank you. I'm Linda Cohen, and I live at forty-eight seventy-five Riannon, which is not far from the Ice Nogels property, formerly Ice Nogel property. So I'm here to speak on, to support that this become a park, whatever it costs. And my neighbor asked me to inquire about what exactly the sixty thousand dollars is that is required from Rolling Meadows, I guess, in order to complete this transfer. And is there anyone who can answer that question?
I appreciate you asking the question. During public comment, we do not share answers, but we can definitely follow up with you after the fact and get you information that might help assist you in that knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, so I want to say that I've, all the years I have lived here, I've been very happy to go over to Joanne and Paul's place, and it's a wonderful property that ranges from a prairie to a woods and hundreds of gardens, really. And I hope that it will be a park. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with the speaker concluded, we will continue on now closing the floor for public comment, moving on to items pending. First item is line item A, ordinance number twenty-one dash four-two. At this time, it's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In for second reading, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Reyes, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Next pending item, line item B, ordinance number two-one dash four-three, is to authorize the disposal of surplus city property and equipment. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika, for the first. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Sonoika.
Just a correction, this is the sale of personal property and not the disposal.
Excuse me. You are right. I have conflicting information here, so then for that, I will rephrase. Is there a motion to adopt the authorization of sale of surplus city property? Thank you for making the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for making the second. Continuing on, is there any further discussion with the clarification of the verbiage? All right, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bassisi.
Yep.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of two items. I am going to pull item D, as staff is requesting a waiver of the first reading, and since there are only two items, we'll just go through them individually. First line item C, ordinance number two-one dash zero-zero, is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yep.
With four in favor and none opposed, this will be moved forward for second reading. This now brings us to item D, where staff is asking for the waiver of this first reading so it can be approved immediately. This ordinance number two-one dash four-four, at this time, is to amend the alcoholic liquor code to reduce Class A-one liquor license by one, and to increase the number of licenses permitted under a Class A-two liquor license for Hickory Roasters Incorporated located at fifty-four forty New Wilkie Road. Is there a motion to adopt this, or to waive the first reading? Excuse me.
So moved.
Thank you. Alderman Sonoika, thank you, Alderman McHale, for waiving the first reading. Any discussion on waiving the first reading?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Bassisi.
Is there a reason?
Staff. Julie.
I'll turn it over to Chief, but I'll just mention it. It's really just a cleanup of the original. Chief, you want to add to that?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council. That is correct. It's just Hickory Roasters should have been an A-two license holder instead of an A-one, so it's just to reclassify that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
From a legal perspective, too, the city code does authorize these license classifications, ordinances, that to have one reading as well, so.
Oh, no, I agree. I just wanted to make sure for the residents they understood.
All right, so any further question, comment, or concern on the waiver of first reading here? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, we now move on for final approval. Again, of ordinance number two-one dash four-four, amend the alcoholic liquor code to reduce Class A-one liquor license by one and increase the number of licenses permitted under Class A-two liquor license for Hickory Roasters at fifty-four forty New Wilkie Road. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Is there a second? Alderman McHale, thank you. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us on to new business, and the new business is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Reyes, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bassisi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent resolutions. This section contains five items. Those items are F through J. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares it an order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Reyes, for the second. Beginning with line item F, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash seventy-five, it's to award a contract for pavement removal services to supplement the twenty-twenty-one annual pavement patching program. Line item G, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash seven-six, is to authorize the replacement of Public Works entry gate operator. Line item H, resolution number twenty-one dash R, excuse me, dash seven-seven, is to award professional services contract for biannual engineering inspection for seven city roadway bridges. Line item I, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash seventy-eight, is to award a contract for emergency construction assistance services for sanitary sewer main line repair on Wilkie Road. And lastly, line item J, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash seventy-nine, is to approve a thirty thousand dollar grant agreement with the Salvation Army for relief of city residents. The question is, shall the five resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sonoika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bassisi.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings the council to other business and reports this evening. Tonight, there are no appointments for the mayor to make, and there are no proclamations either. Is there anything for the city clerk to report?
No, not tonight.
Thank you. Then we move on to city staff reports. The first item we have is community items of interest, and for this, I'll defer to Manager Gallagher. Manager Gallagher, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Good evening. Thank you to all those who came out to support Special Olympics at Coffee for Champions event held at Dunkin' Donuts on Kirchhoff Road this past Friday, August twentieth, and really great job to the police department and to Special Olympics representatives who raised funds for Special Olympics, and I think I heard four thousand dollars was raised, so congratulations on that. City Hall will be closed in observance of Labor Day on Monday, September sixth, and there is no refuse or recycling pickup this day. Refuse and recycling are delayed one day this week, and always visit the city's website. The web address is here for the holiday schedule and additional information about refuse and recycling. The next Friday Rock is scheduled for Friday, September tenth, and music for the September tenth Friday Rock will be provided by the Boy Band Review Group, and they are a boy ensemble tribute band. Come out and enjoy the night with friends and family. The Environmental Committee is selling duck race tickets throughout the community. Residents may stop by the finance counter at City Hall to purchase duck race tickets, buy your duck for five dollars or a five-pack for twenty. Cheer your ducks on at the September tenth Friday's Rock event. The duck race is scheduled for six-thirty PM, and proceeds from the duck race will support conservation projects across Rolling Meadows. The duck race is brought to you by the Rolling Meadows Park District, Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee, and the Historical Museum, and thank you for your support. The next city market is scheduled for Saturday, August twenty-eighth, coming up, the Saturday from ten AM to two PM at Community Church, twenty-seven twenty Kirchhoff Road. Thank you to all of the volunteers and city staff who participated in the sixth annual Wind Down by the Creek event held on Friday, August thirteenth. Residents came out to enjoy a beautiful night out with family and friends. Meadows Cruise Nights are back thanks to Meadows Christian Fellowship located at twenty-four oh one Kirchhoff Road. The cruisers will be around from five PM to eight PM on the following Fridays, this Friday, August twenty-seventh, and September third. Please join the Free Family Fund at twenty-four oh one Kirchhoff Road, and if you want additional information, please visit meadowscreesnights.com. The August newsletter may be found on the city's website. Please visit www.citirm.org and click on the News and Views tab. And as always, and will continue to say this, but it's now more important than ever, to continue to shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows, please shop local. The next Business and Community Showcase, this year's showcase, will be taking place Thursday, September twenty-third, at Meridian Banquets and Conference Center, seventeen oh one West Elgonquin Road, from four PM to eight PM. The Business-to-Business Meet and Greet is from four PM to five PM, and from five PM to eight PM, the showcase opens to the community. There is no charge to attend, and the Business and Community Showcase is a friendly and casual atmosphere to visit Rolling Meadows businesses and learn more about what they have to offer residents. And always see if you have questions, Martha Corner, our business advocate. Do you have a crime tip or information that may help Rolling Meadows Police? Please contact Rolling Meadows Crime Stoppers at one eight four seven five nine zero seven eight six seven, or one eight four seven five nine zero S T O P. As always, review the upcoming committee meetings, so for September, there are three. We have the Economic Development Committee scheduled for Monday, August thirteenth, at six PM. The tentative items of discussion consist of the following: new business feedback and contact distribution, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two goals discussion, business advocate update, and other items of interest in the city. And this one was scheduled, rescheduled to this date because of the Labor Day holiday. The Capitol Projects Committee will be meeting Tuesday, Octo, I'm sorry, Tuesday, September the, I think that's a typo there, it's September the, I think it's the twenty-eighth, thank you, that says typo there, at six-thirty PM. It's the last, before the last city council meeting of the month. So tentative items do consist of the annual street program, rebuild Illinois bonds, the state motor fuel tax, and the American Rescue Act funding federal uses plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled for Tuesday, September seventh, at seven PM. And the tentative items consist of the following: public hearing in consideration of a petition for an amendment of an existing special use pursuant to Section one twenty-two dash two seventy-two three of the City of Rolling Meadows zoning code of ordinances to allow for the conversion of an existing car wash space to additional convenience retail space, reduction in required parking by one space, and other relief necessary to accommodate the modification in a C-two zoning district, twenty-two hundred Elgonquin Road. Nicholas Canados, Rolling Meadows, shall petitioner. Second item is the public hearing in consideration of a petition for a special use pursuant to Section one twenty-two three oh one of the City and Rolling Meadows Code of ordinances to allow outdoor storage, and other relief necessary to accommodate the outdoor storage in an M-one zoning district, thirty-eight thirty-one Industrial Avenue. Mark Azitas, the petitioner, three-phase construction with the permission from Michael Maloney as property owner petitioner, and continued workshop discussion regarding text amendments that would authorize digital signs for non-residential uses in residential zoning districts. Those are the items for planning and zoning.
Thank you for providing a review of the community items of interest. For this next item, we'll change gears a little bit and defer to Finance Director Gallagher for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one second quarter financials. And for that, when you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We always have a pretty detailed financial report in your packet. I try to provide the high-level overview, and I'm going to do that tonight. These are financial statements and results as of June thirtieth, so it's our second quarter financials. As always, these are unaudited financial statements. We try to include all the funds at a glance, but then we have a detailed look at the general fund. So there's also a cash and investment summary, and then also we have a number of charts to show you the progression month over month and year over year. As of June thirtieth, for the general fund, all-in, year-to-date, our revenues are coming in at twenty million, which is fifty-nine percent of the budget year. So remember that we're at fifty percent of the year through June, so we're a little above budget for revenues. For expenditures, all-in, we're at sixteen point seven million, which is a little bit under budget at forty-eight percent for the year, so about two percent under for expenditures. The reason why our revenues are a little bit higher, of course, we're receiving our first installment of property taxes for the year, so that brings us up a little bit year-to-date. I will mention for real estate transfers, as we've talked about before, those are a little above budget. We have some additional income tax we've seen come in as well, and then sales tax continues to be strong for the revenues for the general fund. Switching over to the utilities fund, again, we always report on the major funds to keep everybody apprised of that. Year-to-date revenues, all-in, are about five million, which is about four percent below budget for utilities fund. Why that's important is that year-over-year, when looking at that, we're very similar in how we're operating from last year. So we're not really seeing any dramatic changes in revenues, but about four percent under the budget. Expenditures are about fourteen percent below budget, and they're coming in at four million dollars year-to-date. As a reminder, we are not, at this time, incurring any penalties for residents who are late paying any installments, plans that are out there. Residents have flexibility right now, and then also to that end, there are no shut-offs taking place. So what we're doing right now is working with residents at this point in time and making sure that they're on track with their water bills. In terms of expenditures, of course, we have a lot of capital projects that are going on right now for utilities fund, so as we work towards the year, we'll see expenses increase in that fund. And then the refuse fund, revenues and expenditures are fairly stable for the year. We're trending right on target for that fund. And then included in your packet is some unemployment data, as we try to present that information, and some charts and graphs that kind of show that year-over-year, month-over-month progression. And then also, lastly, the cash and investment statement that's in the packet shows, all-in, through June thirtieth, thirty-one million dollars across all city funds. in through June 30th, $31 million across all city funds, with the largest share of cash sitting in the general fund at 35% total cash for the city of Rolling Meadows. That's a high-level overview, and if there are any questions, everyone can always reach out to me for questions at another time or this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for sharing that. I definitely appreciate the incorporation of employment and unemployment data. This is relevant for us to use as a city. Moving on to the third item here is the July 2021 new businesses, and for this, Manager Gallagher will defer back to you when you're ready for that one.
Yes, thank you. Within the packet, we have them listed. I think what's important is that we're always making sure we're providing some additional notations on these new businesses, and of course, these are four new businesses for this month, for the month of July. In addition to that, our Economic Development Committee reviews these businesses and then also touches base with each one of them. So a committee always volunteers and touches base. Just to provide a little bit of information back to you, along with our business advocate, Martha Corner, does a full welcome to each one of the businesses. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for sharing. That brings us then to the final item here, the fourth item, which is the September 14th, 2021 City Council Draft Agenda.
Thank you. For September 14th, we have a pending ordinance, of course, the COVID-19 pandemic, second reading. Under consent ordinances, we do have three, which is the COVID-19 pandemic ordinance. We have an ordinance approving a recapture agreement for 2800 Brockway. An ordinance for approve abandoned gas lane station ordinance, the warrant for approval. And then we have, under consent resolutions, accept public utility 2800 Brockway, approve manhole rehab program, which is the annual program. We have a resolution to approve pavement striping change order, a resolution to authorize the replacement of HVAC units at City Hall, and a resolution to award Phase 2 professional design engineering services contract for the water main improvement project. And then under Other Businesses and Reports, community of items of interest, the distribution of the FY 2022 proposed budget, August traffic review report, and the draft agendas remaining for September, and then closed session items.
Wonderful. Thank you. That now wraps up the Other Business and Reports and brings us to matters not on the agenda. Are there any matters not on the agenda? Alderman Bessesi?
Yeah. I just want to very briefly give a quick update on the hiring committee. The posting's been out there for about two weeks now. We've received several resumes. The committee has met once to review through them, and we do have several that are of really good quality. We continue to take applications, and the process is moving along fairly well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Are there any other matters not on this evening's agenda? Okay. Seeing no further matters not on the agenda, you'll notice that there is a request to go into closed session this evening. It does require a motion and a roll call vote. There are three items we're entering into closed session for. First is land sales under 5 ILCS 120/2C 6 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act, the setting of a price for sale or lease of a property owned by the public body. The second item is pending litigation under 5 ILCS 120/2C 11 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act to consider litigation when an action against the public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal. And the third item, personnel, under 5 ILCS 120/2C 1 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. With that, do I have a motion to enter into closed session? Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Do I have a second? Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Is there any discussion about entering into closed session? Seeing none, I'd ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Sanica.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. Be advised that the council does not anticipate taking any further action upon returning to open session, so for that, I wish everyone a wonderful evening that does not have to stick around. Thank you.